And then make it full screen. Three dots down below. Yeah, and then fullscreen will get rid of all that other stuff. Great. Okay, I will now I gotta find out what time it is. Oh, there it is. I will call this regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:01. Please join me in the pledge. You're in front of Jeff. Pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic.
One nation under God.
Indivisible.
And liberty, justice for all.
Thank you everyone. Okay, so through our agenda, public input, no public. And correspondence, nothing other than what I have already. Kathy, nothing came through you, okay? And then election of officers, which I wanted to discuss with everyone. But I would like to move it towards after, at least after the high school HBAC and maybe even after Muscat Center Locker Room. So I'll make a motion that we move election of officers towards the end of the meeting.
Second.
Jeff seconds. Any discussion? That can explain then, but something we should look at. That's why I sent the charter stuff out. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Dave says aye to opposed. Done. And then approval of meeting minutes. I would like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 9, 2025.
Second.
And Dave rescind his second. Anything anybody needs to update or question on those minutes? Should be good with that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody know? And I don't think anybody here has to abstain. But I think we're good. So moving into our old business, high school HBAC upgrade. Um, what do we have for for an update, Rick? Yeah, you're still me up there.
Alright, yeah, there we go. So can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, great. So um in my absence, uh, kind of moving along, we uh, still had to go through one more round of state approval um, for the abatement. And that did occur la- uh, a week ago yesterday. Uh, I met with Save More, uh, state representative, uh, someone from Accurate Insulation who handles the core drilling for the abatement, um, as well as, um, Representative Save More on site. And went through, they wanted to see means and methods of how we were, um, even though it was, you know, described to them, uh, how we were going about this. Um, spent a bit hour and a half, two hours. They actually core drilled through one of the, uh, the walls from the hallway into a classroom. And this took place during the day while no one was in school, uh, while everyone was on recess. Um, and the gentleman who was out there, Jerry, uh, seemed to be very pleased with what he saw. But I guess there's a new approval system, if you will, um, that he cannot typically, he could, you know, write the approval right there. And, um, and get it out that day or the next day. He did submit it up the line and we're still waiting for approval on that. So it's gone just over a week. So it's five business days today, uh, to get that approval. I did follow up last Thursday with them. And, uh, they said that it was, um, you know, up the line with the supervisor for approval, but had no, uh, no written written approval. Uh, Bateman was supposed to start on Tuesday. Um, so naturally we can't get that approval letter. Uh, Dr. Carver, uh, as a result, can't send out the letter to the parents, uh, so we can't start abatement. We're, you know, hoping any day now, uh, Dr. Carver had, um, asked if, you know, we thought it would be prudent for her to to, um, you know, call the state DPH, uh, as of yesterday. And I kind of said, you know, maybe we should hold off. I did get back to her via email today and said, you know, if you do have some pull there, it might not hurt. Um, you know, it's been five days and that should be more than enough time to to get a written approval, uh, on that.
Yeah, she plans on contacting them tomorrow.
Okay, great. Terrific. Yeah, it was kind of mid afternoon when I, when I sent that email out. So I was crossing my fingers to, uh, that we would get it because they did, they did seem to think that it was going to be coming, you know, fairly soon. So that's, um, that's kind of holding us up a little bit. Um, no, no, um, reason to panic at this point. Uh, they, they do have plenty of time to do the the core drilling in the, uh, abatement. Uh, if they need to throw more people at it, they can. Uh, there's very little, um, in the walls that they suspected might be there. Um, you know, in, in, in putting their camera down, they have this camera that's on a wire and they kind of put it into the CME wall. And, uh, it was clean. Um, and I know he had mentioned that it was clean, the first couple of ones that we did as well. So, so, uh, you know, we're just kind of holding pat on that. But that being said, um, they're not sitting still by any stretch of the imagination. Uh, they have hung as of, as of that Tuesday when we were there, they hung about, uh, all the VRFs uh, in the ceiling on the second floor. And about seventy-five percent of them were done on the third floor and they were hoping to have them done by Monday, uh, this past week. So, and I believe that they have, uh, a question on two of those for color Ronin, uh, so they haven't excuse me, hung those, but, uh, those would be the last two that they have, they haven't hung. So, so that's moving along. We did, we're still waiting for some RFIs for Save More. It's been about three weeks or so since we had, uh, that coordination meeting. And, uh, you know, there's some direction that was given verbally and some things that we know can be done. But, uh, their directive was to get us RFIs. Um, Jay from, from Save More was on vacation last week. And, uh, I've been on him, uh, twice this week already saying, you know, listen, you, you told me yesterday that the RFIs were going to be here today, Wednesday, and they're not here. You got to get on your, your contractor. So, uh, we are waiting for those, um, to move forward.
So you're waiting for answers from Save More. Here's our color Ronin.
Yeah, we're wait- no, we're waiting from questions from, from Save More's vendor, their sheet metal vendor. Uh, and what, once color Ronin receives those questions, and I think for, uh, a lot of those, they probably already have the answers written out. Uh, they're, they're, they're waiting with bated breath as well for these, uh, these questions. And we would just want to get them on record. So we want to memorialize anything that was said at the meeting. Uh, to make sure that we're, you know, going in the proper direction. And then if there's anything that needs, you know, uh, might cost additional monies, uh, that we need to get those, uh, and the pricing done so that we can naturally move forward and and, uh, they can't move forward until we get it approved by the town. So we need to, we need to bring it forth. So, you know, I don't want to, I need to expedite this and get this in the forefront. Um, you know, number one, to make sure we've got the budget and number two, that make sure we're doing it the proper, the proper methods. Alright. Um, having an OAC meeting, it was disappointing yesterday that, uh, we have typical OAC meetings that Save More was running, ran late, did not attend the meeting. Uh, consequently, I've asked him for, um, he was late to another meeting. And I said, you know, listen, we, we need to, we need to make sure you're available for these meetings because, you know, everything revolves around the contractor and, and to make sure we know what the subs are doing. So, um, we're going, I'm going to be sending out a, uh, email tomorrow, uh, looking to push that meeting back the same day, but an hour later, uh, to see if that will work for everyone. Uh, during the OAC.
But can, will Save More, can they make a commitment to be at the meeting so that?
That, that's who I, that's where I got them. The, I, I said, listen, I need, I need a time from you that you can make it and not have any excuses that you're not going to make it. So. And he, he gave me, uh, the, the eleven thirty timeframe. He was coming up a meeting at ten o'clock that, or nine thirty or ten o'clock that he, uh, has prior to ours and that ran late. So, so yes, that's what I'm trying to do because, you know, basically, most of our information needs to come from them. Uh, during the OAC meeting, uh, Tyler brought up a few dates, uh, that, um, might conflict with some of the, um, uh, night work that needs to be done in the building, uh, such as spring concerts, art show, post-prom. Uh, he did send me those after the meeting and I forwarded those on to, uh, to, um, Save More to make sure that they, uh, can adjust their manpower accordingly. So. And that's, I mean.
So you were saying with the abatement, they were supposed to start Tuesday, meaning yesterday?
Correct.
Okay, so there, we're still on a holding pattern with that pending approval. Um, because as Dr. Carver said, she can't send out the letter until she gets that state approval. Can't start work, don't want to get in trouble, all like that.
Exactly. And I did speak with Dr. Carver about the length of time that she thought she might need from, from issuing the, the communications to when we can start. And she said, really, as long as she gets the communication started, we can start the next day. But naturally, that's, that's provided that, uh, the next day we're, um, communicating with the school, with Tyler and, and the principal, uh, to make sure that, uh, you know, we're starting in the right places. There's nothing going on, et cetera. So.
Okay. Anything else on updates or?
That's the, that's the, you know, the status in a nutshell.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Rick? And then, did you say you got something from Save More on a specific time date that they say they'll definitely be at an OAC meeting?
Yeah, um, I think it was eleven thirty on Tuesdays. Normally it was ten thirty on Tuesdays was, uh, had been our, our meeting time.
Uh huh.
So.
And is that every Tuesday? Or is that?
Every other, every other Tuesday. Uh, we're going to be pushing toward for, um, a two-week look ahead schedule, which I want issued every week, just in case something changes during that week. I don't want to wait two weeks and two weeks and two weeks. Just so I can keep Tyler and, and principal informed about, uh, you know, what's going on because they may get, you know, they get extra classrooms done one night and not, or not enough than the previous. So this way we can schedule, uh, at least, you know, five to 10 days in advance, uh, what we're doing.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Anything, any more update kinds of things from Rick or Jen or Tyler? Okay, so the look ahead that you get from Save More, I mean, it's not something that needs to get shared with us, right? I mean, it was just like it's between, it's like internal so you can get get with Tyler and the principal and make sure certain rooms are available, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct. We want to make sure that number one, there's going to be nobody in those rooms at, at the time, you know, nor extracurricular activities going on. Number two, to make sure that, uh, you know, we know to check those rooms, make sure that everything's been cleaned. Um, yeah, after the fact and, and just make sure it's a safe environment because they do close, they do close off the, uh, the area of the hallway from, um, normally for the, as a general rule, from fire door to fire door where they're working. So we want to make sure that everything within the school is, is secure.
Right. Okay.
Actually, I do have a question. Uh, is there any tentative start date for the abatement? Like, is, how far?
Right, right now, it's, you know, we're, they're, they're ready to start as soon as we can get the, as soon as we get the approval. So, you know, we were hoping to get it Thursday last week and it's, and it's, yeah, approval from the state. Um, that their official sign off. Then once that sign off comes in, um, we'll send it over to, uh, Dr. Carver. She'll get the communication out and then we can start.
So is that like another week, you think, or two weeks? Like, what's the timeframe for that?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping it's tomorrow. I'll be honest with you that we get that approval.
Alright.
It's waiting on that state approval and
Yeah.
Are they pushable? We don't know, but they're going to try.
Yeah, I mean, I tried to push them last Thursday. I, I showed up the meeting and I, and I tried to push them the day of the, you know, and got the explanation that it's really, this is something new, like the past month. And, uh, you know, so, you know, they still don't know what, how it's, how it's happening. It used to be, you know, 10 days and you got your approval. You know, we're, we're looking at two and a half months at this point.
And if it's new, then you're hoping it's not going to take forever. But I, I, I think between you and Dr. Carver, you need to keep pushing.
Correct.
It's the state.
Yeah, no, I, I just wasn't.
And we don't, yeah. Well, and I think as Rick said, that, you know, I didn't realize that they had new stuff in place and and we're wondering if we keep pushing, are they gonna?
I mean, who knows? That guy's could have been on spring break last week with his kids or something, right?
True, but if there's a new thing in place, then, you know, you want to push, but same time you don't want to piss them off. So they just kind of turn around and don't look your way.
It's that tight rope you walk.
I hope you can.
You have to walk, right?
Yeah, exactly.
You and Dr. Carver, or all of us.
I do have a question, though. Maybe it's in the budget section. I don't know if you, if you just, I'm curious the tariffs, how they're going to impact the project at all, if at all. I guess we'll look at invoices for the, uh.
We have most of the equipment on hand, um, you know, that we did pay for, I think it was a couple hundred thou- a couple hundred thousand dollars that we paid and one of, one of the latest invoices, uh, second invoice, I think. Um, so a lot of that was on hand already. So I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, you know, there's not too much residual left over.
Right, because there was one, uh, not, it might have been the last invoice you were waiting uh, Rick to approve it, to have color Ronin and all approve it until you got photos from them of what was on site, what was not.
Yeah, I believe that was application number two and that was approved. So we, you know, that was, that was all here and, and in Stockwell before the tariffs.
Yeah.
But yes, I mean, on, on many, many projects, that will have a, will have a implication for sure.
Yeah.
And we'll just keep our fingers crossed, I guess.
Right.
Keep buying all the stuff right now.
You have any excuse to raise prices.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Anything else before we do some invoices? Okay, so the first one we'll do, see if I can anything. I'll do the Panoni one. Now I have to go back. Oh. Screen share. Can I screen share? Oh, there it is. No, I don't want to share that. Want to share that. Okay. Just bear with me while I Yeah, good. So I'll make a motion. This is the, uh, Panoni invoice. I'll make a motion if there's questions or whatever. We can make a motion to approve Panoni invoice number one, two, seven, zero, two, three, five dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five and the amount of one thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Second. So I got a second from Tom?
Yep.
So this was for the review of the hundreds of pages of abatement procedure that, um, needed to be, obviously, building official couldn't do it or health department. So this is, I think they're only invoiced because we had approved and not to exceed them out. And then we had the proposal, we approved that. This is, I believe, under that. So, uh, any questions that, because this is, it's done, right? Rick, it's, there's nothing more they have to do.
Yeah, so we did, that, this was submitted, um, it went over to Save More. Um, we're waiting for a response, Tyler. I don't believe you received that response back. There was a couple of things that they were still looking for. And, uh, so we're still waiting for that, um, document, um, when that comes back. I don't be able to take a look at it, but I don't think it was, it was only a couple of items and we probably don't need Panoni to look at it, but but if we did, their, their invoice amount is twelve hundred dollars. Um, their, their scope of work initially approved, uh, I think was sixteen eighty. Um, so if we had to have them take a glance at it and just do it for another hour's worth of work, that would probably be the only invoice, additional invoice.
Okay. Anything else from anyone else? All good, all in favor? Aye. Dave says aye. All, anyone opposed? Good. Done. Next, Save More. So I will make a motion that we approve, uh, Save More application for payment number three in the amount of forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. And this went out to everybody, so it has all the, um, attachments that shows percentages, repaintage, all that. Got a second? Um, Dave rescind his second. So does Dave Olson. Does Dave Olson have a question or you're just seconding? If you have a question, just turn on your mic and.
No question, just seconding.
Okay, thank you. I have a question actually, um, and I think I asked this last time. They have the original contract some, but they don't have a net change by change orders because we did have the one change order adding in the, um, one hundred and twenty thousand for alternate two?
Yeah, so I, I can, I can help you with this. So I did send, actually send it back to them, uh, when they gave me the initial pencil rec. And, uh, asked them to include that, but for one reason or another, they claimed they didn't, you know, they were proceeding with the change order, but they didn't have it. So, um, I addressed that and, uh, Jen did send it over to both the, um, Save More and I. And I, actually, I did receive a, a pencil rec for their next payment app, uh, for our next meeting just this afternoon. And it was on it. So they, they do, they did receive it and it will be, um, included in our next, uh, payment application.
Because that, that change order, which we had approved a while ago, did it get signed by First Selectman?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all in place. And they, and they got it, but it just, they haven't caught up with their paperwork part of putting it in.
Exactly, yeah. Like I said, I did, I did send it back to them, ask them to put it on, but they, they hadn't had it. So we made sure they did.
So, and I also noticed the date on this is, uh, March twentieth. So was it floating around somewhere while you were getting questions answered and?
Uh, yeah, so we sent it back. So that was the, the initial date of that. So they sent it back and actually before I went on vacation, I, that was when I approved it, sent it over to, um, to color Ronin. And Craig thought he had sent it out and to, to be, uh, to be voted on to the, to the, uh, team, but they realized that he needed to do that. So, um, I did make Save More aware of that and, uh, we presented it at this meeting.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about it or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Done. Uh, and so in general, could we, Rick, the three main, um, invoices that we will get monthly are Save More, Color Ronin, and STV. Is there a way to coordinate having them all at the same meeting so that if we end up with nothing to do at a meeting, we don't have to have a meeting?
Yeah, we, we can do that. They can talk to both my folks and, and color Ronin. Uh, color Ronin's, you know, theirs is just, um, you know, one, the same amount every month. So that shouldn't be difficult. And, uh, you know, as soon as we get, um, as soon as we get, uh, Save More's, we can coordinate those, those invoices.
And then we just certainly need to make sure they go to you and whoever is the chair and so that we both know the commission and you, STV, as our representative knows that they're there somewhere and, and not go to just, let's say Jen, or just go to Tyler, or because then it's got to, they've got to say, oh, or finance, don't send it to finance. Um, it needs to kind of come through us so that we can then deal with it at a meeting without it floating around somewhere for three weeks and then it's late. Um, you know, if we, if we are in a situation where the only thing we have is a little update at a meeting, I don't want to drag everybody out to a meeting if there's nothing to vote on, nothing to move forward, et cetera. You know, we, you're waiting to get questions answered, um, by Save More, their contractors, et cetera, the responses to RFIs, or have them write on RFI to get responses. And as you said, there may, that, those kinds of things may affect us in that we have to make decisions on, is it going to be a change order or not, whatever. So we obviously need to keep track of and take care of, but we can do invoices kind of all on the same meeting. That could be helpful.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to coordinate that. And, you know, what I'll do is they'll send the meetings, the invoices to me. I've been sending them, uh, Kathy to yourself and to, uh, I'm sorry, Nancy yourself and Kathy. And, uh, and Jack to have them posted. Uh, so, you know, I'll, I'll keep doing that, uh. And but I'll send, you know, all three at the same time.
Yeah, because it, it, it's helpful to, I mean, I, I, not everybody goes on the chair drive to look for invoices or on the town. You know, if you send it out to everybody, I think it would be a good thing. I mean, have you guys all gotten them? So you can look at them beforehand? Do you get them in a way that you can access them mostly? Yeah? Okay. We just want to make sure everybody can access them before the meeting and review them. So if they have questions, they can bring those up. So then the last invoice we have, which we discussed a lot at our last meeting, is the builder's risk, risk insurance policy, payment, et cetera. And I had asked, but Jason was on, Jason from USI, which I guess is an underwriter from Kerma, um, was on the last meeting explaining everything. And I had asked for an updated invoice because the effective dates are on this and it's still on this invoice, July one, twenty twenty-four to July one, twenty twenty-five. They added in, even though the due date is, um, May first, they added in coverage for the duration of the project. So, um, the effective dates didn't change. I don't like that. Um, I know, Rick, you weren't at the, at meeting, but you did do the recording. So you heard all of the informa- or information that was put forward. And I, I had been looking for, I did at one point, um, email Melanie, town attorney about this. And I don't know, as I got, I got more replies from Brad um, in finance and some from Jen. And I, I still don't like it. Um, it's a big chunk of money. It's not something we've ever had to deal with in a project before. I understand the explanation for, I mean, the, the bigger project, school project that we worked on, both renovations of Rockwell and Johnson, how that was covered sort of in a different way and also created a situation where the town could cover it as part of the regular insurance policy because of the kind of work that was being done. But it's a big chunk of money. And I'll put that invoice up. I gotta go back to. I'm gonna, um, put up, I didn't put up the Save More invoice, sorry. I will put up this one so you can see.
To a point, they could have added after the duration to actually state like an estimated completion date or something like this.
Uh, yeah, not sure why they won't, Kerma.
Well, the effective is probably the policy, right?
It might be the whole, that might be the effective date of the whole policy.
Say, you know, the next year's policy is going to be increased, right?
Right. And so I was told, you know, we were told actually at the meeting, there would that be an increase yet. How do we know? There, what's the, what's the guarantee, so to speak?
Yeah, I think the only thing we have, uh, is the, I think we have an email that he meant that, uh, it was, was Jason sent that, uh, said it's, you know, for the duration of the project, it's in here as well, but as long as it doesn't go past, um, the end of the year. And the completion of the project, I had him clarify, was the substantial completion. Okay, not, you know, sometimes there's, you know, some more commissioning and things like that that goes on after the project, but it's the substantial completion date.
Yeah, I, I know we have that in the emails. I just.
I've got a quick question. Like, this, this just doesn't seem right. This thirty thousand, like, how, what, what is this calculated on?
Let me back up for a second. So basically what has happened is we, so Kerma is our, the town's insurance provider that ensures all of the school buildings. Normally, when you do, um, a school construction project, the current carrier, carrier for your insurance, in this case Kerma, would reduce their charges because they would stop insuring the building that is having the work done on it. And then a builder's risk policy would be purchased that included the builder's risk, risk piece plus all the normal liability coverage for the building. So that, that is what oftentimes happens. That is not what happened in this case because the value of our building, the high school, I think is about a hundred million dollars, something like that. And this project is a two million dollar project. So the value of the building. And the scope of the project are very, very different, which. Resulted in when um, our insurance broker went out to get us the builder's risk coverage, nobody would cover it with liability as well. So the only policy we were able to get is the one um. The builder's risk without building liability coverage on it, which is the original piece that you guys approved. And then there was some. Uh, poor communication from Karma um, where they um, they did say there might be a small adjustment to. The liability insurance on the building. And then it wasn't until relatively recently that they came out and said by small adjustment, they meant thirty thousand dollars. Uh, so um, our insurance broker Jason has assured us that this thirty thousand dollars to ensure the building during this project is not out of line with competitive prices. And if we were to try to go back to the marketplace to get a builder's, a different builder's risk insurance policy that also included building liability, we would be paying more money. So at this point, as much as we um, you know, didn't like to get this invoice and we're disappointed in the communication from uh, from Karma. Uh, the fact of the matter is, is that we cannot afford to lose our insurance on the building like our, we have kids in there. We have a lot of, you know. Twelve, thirteen hundred people in that building every day. Uh, we have to maintain our insurance on the building. So. Um, I I understand your concern about not liking the effective base in this invoice, but um, you we do have to maintain the insurance on our building.
So there's really no vote. It's just we have to pay.
Well, we have to vote to approve the invoice. But I think we need to have, make sure everybody understands. Because we asked a lot of questions last time. If you got more questions this time, I think we really want to understand it.
I mean, I get it, the whole if we were to get another policy, but I mean, did we only ask the contractors to cover up to two million? Or did we ask them? I mean, at this point, if somebody comes in to work on a boiler. Are they going to ask us to pay more on our insurance? Because that guy might be able to burn down the building. Like.
No, that no, that's. That's already covered in in our policy.
So as Dave was saying, what what makes this different? Is it because of the construction?
Yes.
Project that's happening?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is kind of outside. Doing this project is outside. What normally would be covered for any of this. Any town building, I would assume if Karma covers all the town buildings. And somebody comes to work on a boiler here in this building or goes up on the roof to work on a rooftop unit. In this building or any other building. The the whole broad policy covering all the town buildings and properties. Covers that. But not this. Because it's. Larger than what would normally be covered under the town, but. Not absorbed in that same. Policy. That, am I saying that right?
Yes, yes.
Right. So so you have simply put, is there a uh. Contract amount that. Would. Generate an extra charge like this versus uh, uh, maintenance or. You know, if we were doing a project that a million dollars, does that generate? This insurance policy?
If we were to do a substantial building modification project, why would this project? This could trigger additional. You have any plans to do that? All our normal maintenance is.
And then, so what I'm just making sure I'm. There had been some shopping around done with for something to cover what. Because Karma obviously brought this. Up or brought it back because we did pay an amount and here's another amount. So there was some shopping around done for.
Yeah, so our insurance broker, USI is our insurance broker and they did approach approximately. Companies ready at the builder's risk. And the builder's risk pieces.
Which we weren't able to get, right? We have no builder's risk policy?
No, we do have a builder's risk policy. It's just only the builder's risk piece. It does not for liability on the building. We have the normal things. Something happened in the result.
I'm I'm just trying to wrap around what this is actually giving us because we have.
Honestly, this is giving us status quo in our coverage. We have an insurance policy. All of our buildings in. This is what we need to pay to maintain our current level of coverage. Level of coverage. Because our situation changed with this project, they're charging us more money than they normally charge.
Oh, so this is in addition to what's in place now. Because of the project.
Yes.
Tyler's nodding his head too, so. Eh, um. Seems like.
It doesn't sound like we got a choice, but yeah, it doesn't sound like we have a choice but to pay.
Yeah. Well, we can't. I mean, if we don't have the coverage, then. You know, we don't, we don't want to take that chance. It's almost like the same thing. Only different of Dr. Carver sending out the letter to the parents saying, yeah, we're good with all this abatement stuff and the abatement starts and. The state hasn't okayed it yet, so. But it's, it makes me. Even asking last at the last meeting from both Geraldine and Mark and they're like, never heard this before. But again. I do understand the concept of having to have. The building. Covered. And I think normally it would be a larger amount doing a project would. Think maybe even include it as part of the contractor or. Whatever's written into the coverage by the town. Jason did say if we finish earlier than, so. What I would, I think we would like to do, and I might not be able to give this to you right away to put up there once if we approve it. Um, is attach some of the emails that came from Jason that said. This is what Karma said because based on this. They could ask for more money. And if this is the quote legal document. That we. Approve. And our minutes are also legal. Parts of the project because we approve certain things, we don't approve other things. I want to make sure all of that, all of what is attached. As part of this is putting us in a place of we have the coverage, we're not going to pay more money. If we finish by whatever date was in the. Email. Um. So we have something to. Um. Kind of. Put forward if they tried to charge us more money and also, as Jason said, if we finish early. He might try to get us. A refund. So to speak. Or credit or however they put it. So. So before we discuss further, I'm going to make a motion so we can have that be part of um. The motion. So I will make a motion that we approve the. I guess it's, I thought it was a USI invoice, but it's a Karma invoice number three, five, one, five, four. For. Property coverage. It says property coverage for the duration of the HVAC project. And the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Who wants to second it? Nobody does. David Wilson will second it. So.
Are you doing any contingent upon this?
So contingent, um, actually. Um, not contingent upon, but. With the addition of. Emails from. Our Jason. Guerera. Not sure what his title is. Um. With the information that this, even though this says. It's only effective till July twenty twenty five, that it'll be effective through December. Twenty twenty five. David Wilson's okay with that. He seconded it. We should make the motion first and then discuss, but that's okay. I wanted to get some discussion going. Does anybody have anything else about this that we don't like? Say it on the, it's part of the.
I guess you just need to make sure every of the projects that it's now known that you include this in.
Yeah, well, and that's something we would have to know. Ahead of time, we would want to look at any project if Karma is going to continue to be, and I think the the town itself. Probably shops around for insurance. I don't know how long the the policies last on any of the whole entire town buildings.
Period expires seven, one, right? So that's when the whole town policy expires.
It might, this is liability automobile property. So this is the property part, liability for property. Um. So if the town does some shopping around and then it's a different company or whatever, if we have a. Another project, this is the first time it's ever come up since I've been doing this for twenty some odd years. That the insurance is a whole, a whole separate thing and not part of either what the contractor's doing or what the town has in place already. Um. So yes, it's going, I like, that's what. I know. Both Mark and Geraldine last time said, first time they've heard of something like this, but. They're going to keep it on their radar for other projects that they may be involved in. So we will have to definitely keep it.
Well, that's what my question was about. Um, monetary amounts. Say we. Decide to do uh, another HVAC upgrade next year for a million dollars.
Yeah.
Does that mean, does that? Project at a million dollar put us into another thirty thousand dollar house?
Right, right.
Or is it any project really? Right, is it any?
Which would be good to know.
Yeah, just to make sure it's covered in the next project, I guess. And then what's the the cap on that? So a project at thirty million dollars.
Could it? Yeah, right. Could it be a project that the town does not through us, but maybe through Public Works or whatever? Is Karma gonna slap some more money on somebody? Not that you know the answer to that.
You know, it looks like they would, right? So.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on this? That we don't look again? So we will vote. All in favor? I. Everybody's good? Okay, I mean, they're not good. We're voting I. Anybody vote no? Yeah, hand up. Um, all that motion theory, so I can get rid of this then. There we are. Okay, so is there anything else on this project? That we have to deal with tonight or know about? So we don't have surprises, etc. Our next meeting is. May, no, it's the next one because I won't find out I won't be here. It's the second Tuesday, so that's May fourteen. Okay, so we'll see if we can hopefully get. Invoices kind of lined up so that we get them. I mean, if if companies are sending them out. Um, monthly, Colorado does, STV does. If save more is. Trying to do it monthly too, and you say you already have a pencil rec from them. We can get that together. We do it as the first meeting in the month. And then if there's other stuff we have to deal with at the last meeting, we do it if not.
That sounds good. That sounds good.
Yeah. All right. Um, anything else on this project? We can.
Thank you, man.
Yep, we're good. So thanks, Rick. Thanks, Tyler. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.
We'll move on to our next. Agenda item. Uh. There we go. So um. For the. Municipal Center locker room renovation. I have to get up. An email that I just got. Uh. So at our at at our last meeting, I think I talked about um. That I had met with Dan Carter and Rachel McGrath from Park and Rec. On the project because we had, um, you came to the meeting we had with the BMP and. And then they, you know, he sent an email saying they were looking at. Using that whole state contract process, whatever it's called. Um. With Gordian Group. Gordian provides. All kinds of services, which again would fall into the whole state contract thing. We'd have to go out and do an RFP or whatever. Putting together plans to. Complete construction documents. So we have those in place so we can either. Get grant and or get grants and or go out to bid, etc., etc. And um. And I'm gonna kind of roll this into. Charter stuff I sent out. Did I bring it or did I? I could put it up on the screen if I didn't bring it. Okay. What's that?
The charter? Yeah, I just saw it. Saw it on the uh.
So basically. You know, Dan had said, you know, it's the responsibility of. The commission to advise the board of selectmen. Yeah. As we talked at the last meeting, I think a couple of you brought it up that we can advise, but we also need to have a. I was going to give you each a copy of that section, but I can put it up. You brought yours then. Um. I'll put it up.
I have mine here too.
Yeah, okay, good. I'll put it up there so we can all look at it and get rid of that. Look at this and. Open that and then go back here. It's so much fun. And then we share. So it's up there. I don't know if I can make it any bigger or I can't even scroll. I can't scroll. Okay, no, I can't scroll it. Oh, well. Anyways, so it does talk about what the purpose of the commission is, how we work. And I'm going to kind of roll this into the idea of election of officers because. It does say that we're supposed to elect a chair and a secretary. Which is a little antiquated, but uh. In the past, we've elected a chair and a vice chair. And I bring that up as part of um, what we're looking at and I can go back to. I have it on the. Look at my copy. Sorry, Dave, I can't scroll through it for you, but um. Talks about how many members, what we're supposed to do by. Charter. Responsibilities and limitations. And we basically don't have any authority. To enter into contracts with anyone. Or spend money that's not already been. Approved and us and or projects that haven't. Then they have to be assigned to us by the Board of Fine or Board of Selectmen. And we can work on lots of different kinds of things, which we've done. You know, my my first. When I was first appointed, the commission was working on the um. Needs assessment study for the police department. And basically it was the company, the commission had already chosen. Um, a company to do that study. And we were working through quiet phone. Uh. We're working through getting that completed so we could then move forward with the project which um. Ended up kind of not going forward for a couple of years, but uh. Finished. Because that the money had approved, had been approved to do that. So we do feasibility studies as again, as designed by the Board of Selectmen. By its own. If we have to hire an architect, we go through that whole process, RFP, etc. Um. And. Yet. It's kind of like, like I said, we don't have authority to go out and spend money. We don't have, we don't have a budget. So to speak. So I had. And I think I mentioned this, that. In twenty twenty two. The town made an agreement with Colliers, which is a. Company that does owners rep, etc., etc. Kind of like STV thing. Um. I think they might be all over. New England or maybe even further. And. That agreement apparently is still in place. I just reached out to them. One day, I think I got the reply yesterday and I. Couldn't do much with it yesterday. Actually, I ended up getting called in to work at the budget referendum. Uh, replace somebody who had to not be there. So I was busy with that all day. But basically. They were in place to be like do owners project management. Have you worked with them for Public Works Program?
It was a while ago.
Yeah, it was a couple of years ago. Yeah.
GP.
Yeah. So. They also worked with the commission. On the GP room lobby renovations. So they had a project engineer who. Was our eyes and ears on the job. He'd come in regularly, take pictures, come up with. You know, answer questions if they needed answers to, you know, are we supposed to do this or this? Because the plans had been done by. Architects Guild. And then BMP took the plans and implemented. And then BMP took the plans and implemented it with uh the Colliers fellow. Keeping up with everything, making sure stuff was done correctly. If it wasn't, we saw stuff that was not right, and he made sure that got done correctly, et cetera. So I just reached out to to them. They're still in a situation to be. Helpful if needed, though I'm not sure. Exactly how. And then uh I also had emailed. Dan and Rachel, I haven't got it. I forwarded those Colliers email to Dan and Rachel saying. Yeah, there's lots of things we could do. I finally got a reply from Chris Baldwin with a couple of code consultants. Because I think one of the biggest things is what can we do in that area? That's using the space as efficiently as possible without having to have eight million toilet sinks showers. And nobody wants to really answer that. Question. Nobody wants to do the what's the code? So. Yes, we advise, but yet we don't. We're volunteers. We're experts at what we do. And together, we make a really good team. Yet I think we need more.
Yeah, the whole thing's interesting. I looked at this because like. Twenty dash three responsibilities and limitations says basically the board of selectmen kind of a point shoot of projects or something. And then, but then you have the feasibility study section uh, you know, A two, which says you make recommendations. So it's kind of two different. I I it's it's kind of confusing in a little way, again, maybe being into the commission, right? So it's they tell us what they want to work on, but we make recommendations. For feasibility studies of what to work on, I guess, in a way.
Yeah, because we have, we've been assigned. The locker room project. Not a lot of parameters with that.
So that would have been by board selectmen, I guess.
They were, they assigned it to us. So with other projects like with this HVAC, I mean, the Board of Ed is right in there because it's their building. Even though it's a town building, but they're the ones that use it, they have. A lot to do with it. Not just what what's needed. Because they, the whole plans being done by Color Ronin were, you know, discussed. By us and by the Board of Ed a lot before we they started moving forward. This is the only part of that HVAC upgrade. That we're work working on. If there's another phase that they bring us into, they've already done two phases, not with us. Just through, I don't know, where's? Public Works involved in any of the top unit replacements or any of that? No, so yeah, it was probably Tyler or before him, Bob Germanaro. So we're assigned this and it's kind of like take it and run with it, yet at the same time, we need some parameters. One of the things that you remember, Dave, I think it was the Jay from BMP asked, what's? And he may have asked it later on in the email, but um. What's the town looking at as far as expense? Are we keeping it under a million or at a million? Are we gonna spend two hundred fifty to, you know, two hundred million? And we, Dan said, you know, can we do something seven fifty? Two hundred fifty thousand to a million. So that gave them a general idea. Again, the biggest. Part of what they were looking at, what BMP was saying about. Getting some plans going was doing that building analysis, which I still think is not. As necessary. Can't somebody take the existing plans, look around the existing building and do something simple? Do we start with that? Again, would obviously require. Funding. So. Do we get some sort? And I can reply to Scott. With. Some questions. And see, is there something that Colliers can tell us, oh, it's gonna cost this much for us to. Get you this far. Then we'd have to go to the Board of Selectmen and then to the Board of Finance and say, we need this much money. Would they approve it? I don't know. Budget just got approved, but. Again, not sure. Yeah, I think. Like, I think it was Jeff who said last time, do we need more input from like Park and Rec of how they want to use the space?
Yeah, and wouldn't that be part of like that? They would work kind of at that feasibility study where they'd say, hey. So the cycle was under a million, let's say, and here's what Park and Rec wants to do with it. Somebody needs the designs.
Yeah, we need to define the end use. What do we say? Is it just a remodel? Is it just a remodel or just remodeling? I know the showers are like the big ones, but if we're just remodeling, we say. All right, well, there's two big showers. We got the two smaller ones.
Again, I haven't been that part of the building probably in a couple of years, so I think I'm not gonna probably ever really use that, so. I would think the people that use it like Parker.
The hallways going in that way. If you're here for something. The gym and you know what I mean? Like, those areas are now gonna be accessible, but I think if we had an end use. If it's a call it park and rec swing space, you know what I mean? Let's just call it, this is uh, you know. And you know, it can be used for these other. Possible uses, but for right now, let's just call it park and rec swing space. You know what I mean? For their activities for town use.
Yeah, a couple bathrooms and some rooms.
I think we all benefit. Somebody can chime in if I think, I think we all benefit from not saying, don't even bring up.
Don't say locker room.
Don't say locker rooms and don't say emergency anything. That's why, you know, swing space is nice. I mean. Listen, they have it. You go to Danbury Hospital, they have areas that are deemed swing space. You go to any big area, it's sweet. It can be used for a class one day, it can be used for voting.
Yeah, and in those, in those bathrooms, you could put a shower.
You know, just. Swing space. What is that?
But the original um. Plans, which this is part of it from. Architects Guild said. Interior renovations.
Yeah, which is perfect, because then, I mean, I I again, I don't know what's in there, but like.
Because like when they renovated, like.
Listen, if we can, if they can even define it, do we even know how many sinks are in each thing?
We don't know what. Calling it park and rec space, what the end use would require.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We're giving it end use. We're just calling it real general swing space. I mean, they're just big empty rooms and a couple bathrooms. At that point, you don't have to define how many people are gonna be in there. Define anything.
And yet. Part of the, the big thing that that Parker that Rachel has talked about needing is storage. However. She also. And I, and I think I've said this before, was was big on. It, she's not like laying claim to it like fast people have. It's like it's space. That the town owns. How does the town want to use it? So is there a way? Because it's like. The the biggest part of it are those old locker rooms. And then there's some smaller storage areas that were like the coaches off. There's like. So there's the women's locker room, the men's locker room. There was the women's coaches office, the men's or boys and girls, the girls' coaches office, the boys' coaches office. The, you know, and right now, a lot of it. Those coaches offices or whatever is basically just a bunch of storage. So the biggest. Use, ongoing use of it. So in the gymnasium, there's that preschool preschool program that Sharon and Lisa do. It's a park and rec program. It's widely popular. People fight to get into it. It's the. It's actually from. It's like a preschool program from like till two o'clock in the afternoon. For preschool kids. It's Sharon. Yes, yes, yep, and Lisa uh. Free Baron and. They have a big chunk of the storage because they've got all the stuff they bring out for kids to use. So they're gonna need storage. Park and Rec needs. You saw. And we could probably arrange if somebody else wants to go look at it sometime. We can either come before a meeting and have Rachel let us in or whatever. The one, the women's, what was the girls' locker room is just wall to wall shelves up and down and all over with park and rec stuff.
Seventy percent storage.
Yeah, twenty percent bathroom.
So again, I would go back. Well, how much storage does Rachel need? How much storage does this?
So that that used to be, and that's the kind of stuff that we shouldn't have to do ourselves. Rachel shouldn't have herself, but we need to get somebody, some kind of like uh. Advisory type person. I'll ask. So Scott Hellman is the person from Colliers who. Who was our kind of like main guy. Then there was Mark Schweitzer, who was the project engineer. So um Scott's, he's an associate director or whatever, you know, they have the whole hierarchy thing. So generally with our owners, project managers, mostly through STV, because they're the ones that are hired for schools, police station or the training range. We didn't have one on the police station. There's a project manager like Rick is. And then sometimes they're, they have a team of people that they can call on to help with. You know, the one of the things that they had proposed to do for us on the school projects was to have, they have a team of people. To look through the plans that were done for the project, to make sure there's anything missing. But we brought them in a little later. We'd already accepted the plans. And but they they provide that kind of stuff. There's. You know, financial people and. There's all these different executive director, regional director. Senior director, project manager, construction representative. So they all have different jobs that they do. We don't need all these people. Might need one person. Or they may need to, but I'll reach out to him and ask him. I kind of explain where we are and have. And say, well, maybe I'll attend a meeting or I'll meet with you down there and see what we can propose. Because like you said, the biggest thing is what do we call it? How do we make sure we fit into the code? In a way where we're not gonna spend a million dollars on. Like, not a million, but you know, a hundred thousand dollars on plans. Construction documents.
I would also say that if you read between the lines, Dan's budget is seven fifty. I hope he wants to drop a hundred. Building assessment.
For something that's gonna be a couple bathrooms and some storage space.
I mean, from what's there, what they want. I mean. Seven hu- seven to, I think, what do you say? Why do you keep it under, like, let's say, seven to nine hundred thousand?
Yeah, but who knows? I mean, again, it could be this uh a baiting thing where you're drilling holes in the wall for, you know.
So we did have some testing done in that area. When did we do that? It was twenty seventeen. It was a while ago. So it was when when Peter was working on the plans and finalizing them. We had. We had, huh?
In the GP room when they redid all the hallways.
Well, so the only thing that they found. There was lead in the baseboard because it was wood baseboard, piece of wood baseboard. It was there, lead paint, lead paint. Took it out, did it whatever, and um. The stairs that were taken out, the original stairs that went up, the metal stairs that went up to the second floor. One side's still there, the other side got taken out. That's where the family bathroom is. There was lead paint on that, but all they had to do was. Contain it as they took it out of the building and then dispose of it. Same thing with the lead baseboard. The they tested the mastic in the ceilings, the mastic on the floor, they tested floors. Everything was fine. Same thing in the, even though it was built in. I think the fifties, that area. And it's not been touched since. So they went in there and did some, we had hygienics. It was hygienics then, what was known as, went in and did some testing. I think they bashed some holes in the wall because we had them do the same thing in the GP room lobby before. We put the uh. Budget together, bashed some holes because nobody was using the space, bashed some holes in the wall, no asbestos. On the pipes. They tested mastic in the ceiling, tested mastic in the floor. They found that I can't, I have to send the report, but they, we paid money to have them go in and do, the town paid some money to have. Hygienic supervised, somebody coming in to do. Abatement of whatever the stuff was that needed to be abated. It's done. Wasn't much, wasn't much to go.
That whole area is clean, then, I guess, potentially. Again, then you're talking forty thousand, thirty thousand for insurance, additional insurance.
Yeah, well, that we'd have to look into too, but we put, so when we did. When we did, when we did the um the GP room lobby. They had done the testing that back, like I said, bashed holes in the wall, tested mastic, et cetera, nothing. Except for the lead paint they found and then uh. We still put. Because it was ARPA funds and BMP came up with a price of four hundred thousand, four hundred something thousand, let's say four ten. We added like thirty thousand onto it just in case because. It's an old building. That's not been touched for however long, what's going on, because the pipes go down. Through an area downstairs, which is behind the senior center. And they didn't find anything, so we didn't need to use that amount. I think we. Didn't use sixty thousand of what we had proposed to be. That was agreed upon by the town. It was agreed, it was our money, so we didn't have to take it to any kind of meeting. So it was part of that whole chunk of money that the town got and grant. But we would want, I think, you know, you put a budget together whenever we come up with. An amount, we add some in for abatement just in case because. Because we know how that happens with old buildings. So I'll see if we can get something. Um, from Scott about like what's it gonna cost to help us get like to to some? We kind of have a schematic that.
Even like a design, a plan, and then.
Yeah, what 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 do we have to come up with? Uh, to get something going uh. Knowing what we need. Code wise for fixture count. That's the biggest thing. What can we call it? What can we do with that? Just gonna have it here somewhere. That little sketch I made. Everybody was yellowish. Hope I brought that. I think I didn't. Because I kind of like that idea of a smaller bathroom space. That we. It it's usable if the gym's being used. It's usable usable if that end of the building's being used, but like you said. If you have. The vent in the gym. People can go in and out to the bathrooms through the gym, but if you're in the gym lobby, you can only get to the. You actually could get to both of them. If we do the thing where the bathrooms are on this side of the wet wall. And on the other side is a classroom space or a meeting space or whatever it might be called. That would be perfect because. If something's going on in the gym, most people come in through that main entrance, not from the back. Sometimes they come in from the back. The bigger locker room idea or bathroom idea has. Um, the women's space going in through that big gym lobby and the men's space, boy's space, whatever, coming in through that back hallway. From the back parking lot. So you'd have to to get, if you were in the gym and in the gym lobby, you'd have to do the whole go around thing, which means opening up another section of the building.
Event planning to have it all in the front. They can secure that whole area. And lock it down and people can use the bathrooms all day, but no one.
Yeah, I mean, that was the biggest I, biggest plan. For doing the GP room lobby was to be able to, because you can lock that off. Open it up for stuff happening on the front lawn. And people aren't wandering all over the whole building, so. I'll check in with Colliers. And we'll go from there. Anything else you wanna? Put in on this, if you think of something, you could email me. So then going back to our duties and responsibilities. Like it says in whatever section there that we have to. Appoint a a chair and a secretary, which. We kind of did every year. But this, that's our, so. I mean, I think the town used to have, and maybe I don't know charter revisionist upgrading this or updating it uh. Used to have. The. A member of a board or commission take minutes. It's become, and it's a great idea because the minutes are the legal documents of any board or commission. The town has trained people. Kathy being one of all the things. To do, to do meeting minutes. And so there's three or four or five people have been through. Boat training and and a lot of it is knowing how to do everything by Robert's rules. FOI. And the charter. FOI being big because that's Kathy knows there's deadlines and when you have to file an agenda, when you have to file minutes. Special meetings, what you can do, what you can't do, so um. Having people trained, so to speak, is is a good thing. When I first was appointed to public site. As town still does this, we, there was a workshop you could go to. That was run by an FOI. There's an FOI commission, so that one of the commissioners came and talked to us. And it was very good to learn all that because it tells you what you can do and what you can't do at meetings. And what you can do and can't do outside of meetings, things like that. Like, we can't all, we could all get together and go have beer, I think, but we can't get together and talk about. Commission. Business, so to speak, without posting a meeting. We've gone through this with. If we all wanted to go and look at the locker rooms downstairs, would we have to post? An agenda. Open to the public. All like that, because all the meetings have to be open to the public.
I think if all of us went together, you probably would, right? But like, yeah, if, if you went, myself or you and Dave went.
Right, yeah, because when, when the two of us went and you were going to come, nobody else was going to come, that was fine. And we've had to um, to look at that at times, like when we. Tried to have a meeting to, to look at the police station when it was almost finished, to make sure all, everything was getting done, the punch list was getting done. And it was listed as a meeting and I think a report from the newsnight showed up, we were like. Anyways, um, so then going, so going back to that. We, we should. Be appointing a chair. Not me soon. So you could be thinking about that, and you can hopefully do it in a meeting soon.
So is your plan to stay in the commission still, or just uh?
My, there, so there's Dave Olson and I are. Supposed to get replaced, access to know where replaced at some point, um. Dave agreed, and I agree, we both agreed to stay on. Until there's someone, I know people are looking, I've been told, we haven't forgotten about you, we're looking at. Dave needs to be replaced by a Democrat. Okay, because he was appointed to fill John M T's vacancy. I can be replaced by anybody, so. That's because I'm. Done with my term, although if you look in here, this is something we've worked with over the years, um. That when you're appointed, you serve until. Either your term is up or it's in here somewhere, but uh. Or someone is appointed to take your place. So. I didn't need to be reappointed. But when somebody takes my place, I'm done. And I just go away. So it would be good for someone to, and we've always appointed a vice chair, even though it says. We don't have to, or it doesn't say we don't have to, it just says chair. It's nice to have a vice chair in place, because that person could run the meeting. If the vice, if the chair is away, sick, whatever happens. So that person wants to, basically, chair needs to kind of keep track of a lot of what's going on. I usually try to make sure I'm in on emails that are going around, that, that. Then if stuff comes to the meeting, I could speak intelligently, intelligently about it. However, it's not like I. As chair, know all the stuff, so I tell you guys what to do. No, we all have to make the decisions together. So that's why a lot of the information goes out ahead of time, if there's reports, invoices, anything. Needs to go out to everybody.
Is Steve Corbett, the, the other commission?
Right, well, Roger was on vacation, yeah, he had said, yeah, he might not have come in yet, I was looking at my notes from last time and he said, Roger's away. He's coming back tomorrow. So Roger's away and Dave Corbett, who said, Kathy said he, said he was coming, and then he said he wasn't coming, and then he said maybe, so. He's got a lot of work stuff going on. There's seven, yes.
And then there's special people that get put on, like the school. How I got on, the school can now appoint somebody else, right?
Yes, so the Board of, well, the Board of Selectmen would appoint them, but the Board of Ed would recommend to the Board of Selectmen. The park and rec is, and I told Rachel this, if she wants someone from the park and rec commission. To serve with us on this project of the.
I would think that would make sense.
And, but I think it would be, it would be up to her, and it would be um. Someone who. Could come to the meetings when we have meetings, you know, what's their availability?
Yeah.
And what's their sort of like knowledge of what the project needs to be? So for the Rackle and Johnson renovations, our two extra people were Dave Olson and Bob Germanaro. And that Dave became a permanent member. When somebody re- resigned.
So what's your thought then to think about it in the next meeting or something, just because Roger's not here, but next meeting, you're not going to be here, right, so?
No, I'm on vacation, I'm back for that.
Okay.
Because two weeks from now would be the sixth, right? And we're going to have our meeting on the fourteenth.
Right, because that's, it's, our meetings aren't every other week, they're. The second and fourth. So if there's extra Tuesdays in the month, then we have to um. Because next Tuesday is the thirtieth, and we don't have a meeting then, and then the, the seventh is. The next, you know, the first Wednesday, so the fourteenth is the second, that would be second Wednesday, so it's the second and fourth. And it's basically according to the calendar that Kathy put together and we approved and whenever we approved it. Not everybody might have been here or part of it or whatever, yeah. I just kind of stick them on my calendar, so I try to run when it is, so we can look at it again. I haven't gotten, usually I'll get nudges from. Lisa Berg, but I haven't yet, so um. I think she knows we're in transition and that we'll do things. I don't like doing it when everybody's not here. And I like to do it when, like, if Dave and I get replaced, it would be nice to have all those people in place, but I also think someone needs to start. Running the meetings and getting that under their belt, so to speak. So that they can be ready to. Ride us off into the sunset. So, uh, so we thinking about that. And check in with all that, I'll check in with Colliers, and see where we, where we can go forward. I just, I want to keep this project moving, the locker project, and. Get somewhere where we can say, yeah, it's going to cost this much money. Or at least the town could be like, oh, don't wait on that, or, oh, look, here's a grant. Because who knows, maybe there's some grant stuff going on in the background that I don't know about. Right, who wants to do the? I need a second, second, all favor, I opposed, done, thank you, Dave Olson.
You're welcome, bye bye.
I've been that chair on and off for a whole lot of years. So ten, twelve years, maybe.